Are you gonna speak?
No.
Oh, okay.
Just on the hill.
Okay. I'm gonna call the meeting to order of the City of Fulton Council Meeting, April 10th, at 5:30. And may I have roll call, please?
Mayor Wendy.
Here.
Alder Person King.
Here.
Banker.
Here.
Mask.
Here.
Van Campen.
Here.
Niederhoff.
Here.
Hunt. Brondike.
Present.
Van Zuiden.
Here.
Very good, and now we stand and say the questions are ready. And the light is at the front of the room.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time you have recognition of all the chairs, and I have no one has brought that forward, so we'll go on to number five. And that's communication from visitors. And this is when you'll have the opportunity to speak. So at Curtis Temple, you get to speak now.
Okay. Well, I would like to speak in favor of the Drives Historical Committee, and the project they're working on to the community center back to Fulton, Illinois. If you think back, 75 years ago, the city of Fulton had a community center. We had a building that hosted school programs, musical events, basketball games. My father, as an example, played basketball there when he was in high school. That very building we're talking about is in fact the same building we're talking about now for the Drives Community Center. It is the former Fidelity Drives Building. That building 75 years ago provided value to this community. With the proper support, 75 years from now, it can still be providing support for this community. And we have received a recognition of this project from various individuals. State Senator Neil Anderson came out last year, presented a DECO grant for $350,000, supporting this program. Tony McComby was here that day also for that presentation press conference, presenting and supporting the project. Our esteemed mayor, Wendy Owens, was at that event also, expressing support for a community center in Fulton, Illinois. Sherry Bustos, U.S. Representative, made a trip, took time out of her busy schedule to come to Fulton, come down to the building, meet with us, tour the building, and expressed her support for the project. So we've had, you know, a variety of notable people showing their support for this project. And just last week, our governor, J.B. Pritzker, with support of the Illinois Tourism Bureau, listed another grant for this building project of another $350,000. So we've got recognition not only from our state senators, our U.S. Representative, our governor, along with community leaders and community members, that this city could really use a community center for a lot of purposes. You know, it can be not only a tourist destination, it can support tourist activities such as when the boat comes up and they have bus tours, they can headquarter over there. We can have business meetings. I currently work for Timpin Drives, I worked there for many years. And when they have their sales team come into town for their annual meetings where they bring in 70, 80 people, they have to leave Fulton to have these meetings. They rent space in Clinton to have their business meetings. They would be able to have the space in that community center to hold those business meetings, which then supports our local businesses such as Fulton Meat Market and other caterers who could come in and cater those businesses. So you're bringing in tourist dollars, you're bringing in business dollars, you're bringing in economic support for the community, you're supporting our current businesses in the community, and basically supporting the community as a whole. You know, today, when they have blood drives, they do it down at Drives because they don't have a community center for the Red Cross to come in and do blood drives at. You know, there's just a wealth of opportunities that that building could be used for to support this community. And I'm sure I'm not even touching on a majority of the items. Now Jane will talk more about the STEM room that we're looking to put in down there. We already got support from the high school, where they could come in and help us do some of the finishing work, which not only would reduce the cost of the renovations, but provide valuable skills and training to our youth. And that's the other part of the community center. It's not just a community center for this time and this generation. It's a community center for us at this time generation, but it's for our kids, it's for our grandkids, and our great-grandkids. Now this is something that we can have as a legacy to support this community for generations to come. And we're on the path, we're getting close, we just need some help to get us across the finish line to get this business up and running to support this community and the residents of this community and all the people that want to come to this community as tourists. And so I thank you very much for your time, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Then we have Jeff Hosky.
Can I use the podium? Is that all right?
You can use what you want.
Just makes it easier for me to...
Got that school teacher voice, folks.
Yeah, well, I get that from the old man. He's always been a lot of my stuff. So the implementation of a STEAM science, or, sorry, I'm Jeffrey Hosky, principal at Fulton Elementary School, also known as the greatest little elementary school in the world. So the implementation of a STEAM in science, or STEAM lab, and I'll try my best to refer to it as STEAM versus STEM because I would also like to include art to that component as well. That the former Drives Building would have a significant impact on elementary students, specifically within our community. STEAM education is essential in the 21st century. It helps students develop critical thinking, problem-solving, analytical skills that are necessary for success later in the workforce. And moreover, STEAM fields are projected to grow exponentially in the coming years. Students who are well-versed in STEAM subjects will have a competitive edge when they get to the job market. STEAM lab can provide hands-on experiential or experiential learning environment for student elementary students. It can offer them the opportunity to explore and experiment with new concepts and tools such as robotics, coding, 3D printing, and virtual reality, things that we're able to kind of touch on the surface currently at the elementary school. These activities can be designed to engage students' curiosity, creativity, imagination, and the foster their collaborative and communicative skills. Furthermore, the STEM lab, the STEAM lab, can also address the lack of diversity and inclusivity in STEAM fields. By exposing students to diverse role models and experiences, the STEAM lab can inspire and encourage underrepresented groups such as girls or minorities to pursue STEAM careers. It can also help break down stereotypes and biases and promote a more inclusive society. In addition to these benefits, the STEAM lab can also have a positive impact on the community as a whole. It can serve as a hub for innovation, entrepreneurship, and community engagement. It can provide a platform for local businesses, organizations, and individuals to collaborate and contribute to the development of STEAM education and workforce in the region. In conclusion, the implementation of a STEAM lab there can have a significant impact on elementary students and community workforce by providing those hands-on experiences. And just a couple final notes. We've been looking for the last several years, and COVID put a hindrance on things for us at developing a STEM lab, STEAM lab, at our elementary school. The cost is something that is difficult for the district to incur at this time, and now we have other major pressing matters with student enrollments, and, I mean, we are maxed to capacity with space already. So trying to find opportunities. I'm also a subscriber to the belief that kids can be what they can see. I also have a belief that at some point, a student is going to come through our district and is going to be the doctor, or the researcher, or the scientist that cures cancer, or is going to be the first one to step foot on Mars. And then it's just a matter of, did we do enough to fan the flames of that curiosity to encourage them to go that route? They had the potential to do so. But did we do enough to encourage that and want them to want to be able to explore that and learn more about that? So that is always in the back of my head for a lot of the things that we do. And seeing that we have an opportunity to do so with this is phenomenal, specifically within our community. The last thing I'll say is, I can also see if we have a STEAM lab here, with that being a very short bus ride to and from, that it makes it easy to do things with a short field trip down there. Being off-campus, students, it's just a little bit different than being in the classroom. So providing opportunities, especially within the house system that you just installed this year at the elementary school. If you're familiar with the Harry Potter books, and Gryffindor, and Hufflepuff, and such, we run the house systems where we provide rewards and incentives for positive behavior. And being able to go off-campus and have STEM activities and things like that for students to be able to engage in is one of those that we could certainly be using three years ago.
Jeff, just what does it cost for a STEAM?
I believe our last quote to be up to school code with the area we were looking, which we had three exterior walls already. And in my head, again, not being an architect or an engineer, we just have to put a fourth wall up and go to there, $330,000. To add a fourth wall and then make it up to school code, and it would have been on the north side of our building.
And I have one question. When the STEAM or STEM groups go down, is it a special teacher that would be hired for that specific and go with the children to that program?
At this time, it would likely be the homeroom teacher or the teachers from those selected houses as an incentive component from there.
Because they have to be supervised by the teachers.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we would never have, I would never just send students down here and supervise without, you know, without staff to be able to provide adequate supervision. That would never be an issue.
And the elementary is able to provide that extra staffing?
Yeah, well, it would be part of either the homeroom itself or that grade level coming down. Or it would be through our house system where our teachers and our staff are actually split into those houses as well. So then they would oversee those things.
I give you five minutes.
Thank you.
Sue, could we maybe clarify? Jeff was talking about adding a room at the elementary building because there's no space there. So that's the cost that he's giving you. But in terms of the internal components, is that what you were asking about? I'm just asking what it would cost to have, to get that. Because you have to have precipitate walls and everything, then?
Yep.
That's what you're saying?
Yep. Everything, if you get the school code to put up basically one room on, would be to the tune of $330,000. And then we'd have to additionally then outfit for STEAM activities and such. I suppose I can probably just do this. Take one, pass them down. There's a copy of my letter.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Go on, Jane. I'm gonna wait till it's all the way up there, and you're all... Well, I'm short of another person tonight, so I did have a couple of letters to read. So we'll flip it twice, there you go. I'll call that, just a second here. Betty Steiner was not able to come. She's from the Economic Development Group. She's a former director. I'm very pleased and excited to write this letter of support on your efforts to create a conference event center within the former Drives Building. By doing so within a downtown area, you will be able to accommodate many more weddings, corporate meetings, and conferences by many organizations and citizens within the region. As former Whiteside County Development Director and Enterprise Zone Administrator, I know how lacking our county is for such facilities, especially in western Whiteside County. Over and over again throughout the years, I have heard the concern that there are no venues for wedding receptions, fundraisers, or capacity to conduct a large-scale conference or business meeting. One prime example of how much an event center is needed in the annual, is the annual Morrison Community Hospital Foundation fundraiser, held each year to provide funds to assist the hospital by providing new equipment and services. As president of the foundation and hospital board, I know how boards struggle each year to where to hold this event. Each year, we discuss how we would love to be able to hold the event within western Whiteside County, but are unable to do so because there are no venues large enough. I am sure there are many other organizations that have the same problem and would love to be able to hold their events in beautiful downtown Fulton. This new event venue will not only help to support the local economies by creating new tax dollars for the city of Fulton, but will also be able to fill hotels, restaurants, and your local shops. Your local great restaurants will be able to provide catering services of which will be a great benefit to anyone conducting an event or meeting. Air meeting at Mistrrelli's this year, as they have in the past. This one, we also have one from the economic, the current Economic Development Director, but I'll pass on that one. This one's from the Clinton Convention and Visitor Bureau. I'm in full supportive venue that indicates more amenities that are offered to larger communities. Iowa and Illinois are struggling to provide venues that accommodate large wedding, business meetings, conferences, and exhibit spaces. Coming from the tourism industry, we are aware of the lack of venue space needed to enhance the economic impact in our area. We have received many complaints regarding the absence of buildings between Clinton County in Iowa and Whiteside County in Illinois that provide adequate kitchen space, proper sound systems, and ample square footage for events. Obviously, this greatly restricts our tourism industry. It is with keen enthusiasm that the Clinton Convention and Visitor Bureau endorsed the creation of this proposed event that will feature a lower level that would accommodate groups of around 125 to 150 or fewer, and an upper level that when finished could be used for larger meetings or wedding receptions. The proximity to the river and position across the street from the Windmill and Windmill Cultural Center would be an asset and would allow access for STEAM ship or tourist events. The proposed site includes plans for an exercise area, multi-generational STEAM room with computers and a 3D printer, and a health department-certified kitchen that will accommodate about 40. Later renovations will see a Mississippi River room to display information about the river and area flooding, complete with a river view. There will be Dutch treasure room that will house Dutch artifacts. There's a genealogy room. The Historical Society has a large database, but the current research room is too small. The programs of the Fulton Historical Society and the Windmill Cultural Center, et cetera, have outgrown their spaces. So this would be a solution for that problem. Our local economy would most definitely benefit from the proposed event because of the size and versatility, which lends itself to multiple kinds of events, bandits, receptions, dinner events, and so much more. Thank you for your consideration. You're good. Okay. I flipped it, you're really good. Well, we're here again to request that you invest in this renovation of the Fidelity Drives project. As you know, we are strategically located on the Great River Road, the Lincoln Highway. We have two bridges that enter to and exit from Iowa, and we are about equidistant between Galena and the Quad Cities. Fulton is listed on the internet as one of the best small towns to visit in Illinois. We have two of the most unique places to visit in the state of Illinois, in the authentic Dutch Windmill and the Windmill Culture Center. We are researching this because we believe we have the only scale model windmill museum in North America. The only other scale model windmill museum that we know of is right outside of Wolfsburg, Germany. And why do I tell you this? Because the state of Illinois has just awarded $22.5 million in tourism grants, and the Fidelity Drives Building will receive $350,000 by matching the dollars. This is not the same grant that we have been awarded previously. So we can either match the dollars, get the grant, or return it to the state, and some other group will get the dollars. So your financial support is more important now than ever before to this community and to the worker bees. The most recent figures from the state of Illinois show that for every $1 spent on tourism in 2021 equated to $91 in visitor spending, and it generated $10 in state and local tax revenue. So an enormous return on their investment. Illinois is choosing us to receive this grant because they believe that our renovations to the Fidelity Drives Building will add to the economic, to the educational, to the cultural, and to the social fiber and health of our community. Now, some of you have said that you don't think taxpayer dollars should help fund taxpayer grants. But that's done all the time. For example, our school district is funded by taxpayers totally. We write grants all the time to supplement or to enhance whatever programs we have. Many of the grants just announced by Governor Pritzker are going to cities and to villages. And they're for things like renovating marinas, building kayak launches, putting money into the Drives Building for renovation. So let me review just a couple of the goals. The renovation of the STEM room for the youth of the community and families, and that will be open all year long. Space for meetings, small groups, large groups. We could house a craft show, we could house a small flea market, we could showcase small businesses with a small business fair, certainly bridal or baby showers. A robotic day for youth. We could have computer classes. We can have a financial seminar for a family gathering, or business trainings and meetings. It could also supply social nutrition for some of our senior citizens for a gathering spot. So the educational, social, cultural, and economic opportunities are endless in addition to providing visitor and tourism space. The initial space, of course, has to do with heating, air conditioning, electrical, and plumbing systems along, and to have accessibility, and ADA compliant hatches. There'll be an office space and storage. And then later, the upstairs area will be the large reception room. Jane, I flipped it twice, honey. Okay, all right. The previous mayor and council did preview plans at one point for a community center building, if you remember. And that was going to cost between $600,000 and $700,000, plus the demolition of the Drives for $153,000. So again, we're hoping that you will reconsider your position and support us in this effort because we're close to having that first $350,000, and that will give us an additional $350,000. The second $350,000 will have to raise, but we need that $350,000 also to move on down the road. Now, I don't know if you have any questions or not, but like I said, we know that the ARCA funds can be used. There are things in our area that are also using ARCA funds, so we know that that is a valid use of the funds. Can I ask if you have any questions? Okay. Did you say that the Pritzker tourism grant is also, you gotta match that one too? Yes, you do. So, and that's totally separate. So we'll have to have totally separate accounting, I'm sure, for that. And Sue, you had a question about the STEM room. We actually have some people who are willing to help support putting the things into the STEM room. They've already indicated that they would be willing to help support that asked for. So... The businesses that will not donate to the renovation of the building but will buy equipment from the STEM room? It's a different group than I'm even talking about. Oh, I don't know about that. What kind of money would the STEM room bring in for the Drives Building? That probably is not going to be bringing in a lot of money unless we have special events outside. You know, I'm not sure at this point if we'll have a small fee or if you use some of the materials and there will be like a material charge. That I don't have the answer to at this point, but we're hoping that that would be, you know, able to be sponsored. And we do have some volunteers who are willing to help be there when people might be coming in. And Stacy Gates is our coordinator. Well, and I think probably Jeff is. Jeff and Stacy, yeah. So, yeah, we've got some educators, and then there's another gentleman in the community, pardon me, the engineer. He's willing to give assistance also.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who can do the question?
You can see, we're still pretty excited. I mean, I could have jumped out of my skin the other day when we got the information that we had another grant because I think it's pretty special that the state of Illinois is looking pretty carefully at what we're doing. You know, we, this is a competitive grant. We submitted it, probably 50 pages quite some time ago, so we're excited to have received it.
Well, thank you.
Sure.
We'll be keeping and voting on this further down in the agenda, but right now we have to go on to number seven, and that's the consent agenda. And all the items in the consent agenda will be enacted by a single motion and a roll call vote. Any item may be removed upon request by the mayor or any audit person and considered individually after all the items of the business on the consent agenda. May I have a motion?
I make that motion.
And a second?
A second, that's motion.
Any corrections? There are none, may I have roll call, please?
Alder Person King.
Yes.
Banker.
Yes.
Mask.
Yes.
Van Campen.
Yes.
Niederhoff.
Yes.
Hunt. Brondike.
Yes.
Van Zuiden.
Yes.
Very good, we go on to number eight on your agenda. That's the business items. And this is where we'll be making some motions. The first one, I need a motion to approve the resignation of Harley Hunt. And the second, Ward Alder Person.
I make that motion.
All right.
I'll support it.
And any discussion? Otherwise, I need roll call.
Alder Person Banker.
Yes.
Brondike.
Yes.
Niederhoff.
Yes.
Van Campen.
Yes.
Mask.
Yes.
Van Zuiden.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Very good, we go on. I need a motion to approve the ordinance to sell municipality-owned real estate and cash contract to Dan Dolan. Those are on pages 22, 23, 33. And, so, silent? Okay, very good, are there any questions? We've talked about this for a while.
Couple of comments. Go ahead, do it. So we received an email last Thursday, late today, from Mr. Dolan's attorney asking for two changes. One is an 11(c) that they'd rather use a minimum megawatt rather than acres. So they want to state that they would install not less than two megawatts of solar panels, next to the fact that solar panels are apparently getting smaller, you don't have as much space for a megawatt. And then the closing would be 45 days when the people are selling. But also, he wants to complete the development already before, but I'm not sure where that stands. I don't hear a phone. From Rob?
What does that mean? I mean, what's the megawatt?
Well, the tip. I don't know the megawatt.
We don't know. It's just gonna take less space.
Yeah, they're making it smaller.
They're making it smaller. Oh, he's just telling us how much he's gonna use. And then what's the other item that's being changed from what we're working on?
So the closing would be 45 days and it'd be to sign in the contract.
And that's what you agree? There's nothing now to hold up the signing now, but coming to approve it.
Shouldn't be, other than the development.
Because it's been in the newspaper for two weeks.
Right, yeah, you can pass it. Yeah, that's, you couldn't pass the ordinance until that was signed.
All right. So a motion's made in second.
Roll call, please.
Thank you.
So now you already have eight corporate authorities, so you, you vote.
Okay.
But only take six, you can take six yes votes, between the mayor and the president.
Mayor Wendy?
Yes.
Alder Person King?
Yes.
Banker?
Yes.
Mask?
Yes.
Van Kampen?
Yes.
Nederhoff?
Yes.
Brondike?
Yes.
Van Zuiden?
Yes.
Very good, we go on to letter C. This is, I need an official proof, way bids, progress drive, projected amount is a hundred and twenty thousand. Do you have that motion? Did you, and a second?
A second.
Any discussion or questions for Dan? Otherwise, roll call. Alderman Nederhoff?
Yes.
Banker?
Yes.
Mask?
Yes.
Van Kampen?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Brondike?
Yes.
Van Zuiden?
Yes.
Do we have a vote on this?
Doesn't that, no, no, we just need the two-thirds, so we're good.
We go on to letter D, and that's, I need a motion to approve the business registration form with no fee attached. It's on the very last page of the agenda.
Do you think that's motion?
And a second. And any questions? Because I think we talked about it before, and we have roll call, please. Alder Person Mask?
Yes.
Van Zuiden?
Yes.
Banker?
Yes.
Brondike?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Nederhoff?
Yes.
I have a question, but not on the, on the motion. Dan, somebody asked me the other day if we get hotel motel tax off the air B and Bs. It's, no, there's no, because they do pay a sales tax.
Yeah, there'll be a sales tax from private events.
But it doesn't, they don't come out without hotel motel. Somebody asked me, and I didn't know the answer. Thank you.
All right, we go on to letter E. I need a motion to approve the Catsell Building rental rates, currently at forty dollars for Fulton in-town residents, seventy-five for out-of-town patrons with a forty-dollar refundable deposit. Proposed rate from the Parks and Rec Committee is a hundred dollars for the, for Fulton in-town residents, a hundred and fifty for out-of-town patrons with a hundred-dollar refundable deposit. Do you have that motion?
I think motion approved. A second.
Okay, any discussion? Otherwise, roll call, please. Alder Person Nederhoff?
Yes.
Banker?
Yes.
Mask?
Yes.
Van Zuiden?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Brondike?
Yes.
Van Kampen?
Yes.
Okay, we go on to letter F, and that's to approve, I need a motion to approve the liquor license ordinance, special event, special use. And that was at your seats, it didn't get into your package, but this was an addition, right, Bill? We have a special use and a special event because we need two, one is for events, and one will be for special use of people that already have liquor license. So it's like if Denny O wants to have something, he already has one, so then that will be a special use license, and special event is for when we have Dutch Days, Ball Festival, any of those other things. So we, we needed an ordinance for those, so.
Make a motion to approve the ordinance.
Thank you. And roll call, please.
I, can I just, I haven't read it, but I just glanced at it because I, I think that was last, the, would the agreement was in, and I...
There's a few changes.
Yeah, there's one about the city council will do something, and we haven't talked about it. So it says, or city council will do regulations, the, under G, the city council will establish rules and regulations, but we haven't established anything, so we should...
You did years ago, and I assume you're going to redo that.
We're going to change that?
Well, that's what I'm saying.
But yeah.
Could we table this on next week so we, we next week decide what our rules and regulations are going to be?
It doesn't have to be an ordinance, so correct?
Right, right, it's just saying that you can, rather than amend the ordinance, if you want to establish rules, you can just establish rules by motion.
Basically, there's some flexibility.
Rather than ordinance.
To give us some flexibility.
So, and you did years ago, put together, I think it was called Beer God Regulations, and there were some rules and regulations.
So those would be applicable to this as now.
Correct, but you can also change them by motion rather than put them in ordinance where it takes cost to do an ordinance.
We just need the ordinance to go forward.
So those outstanding rules apply to this.
Still until you change.
They're two kinds of, two separate things.
Right, specially, that, she says, special event would be for non-proper organizations, special uses for an existing license holder, liquor license holder.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify. Roll call, please. Alder Person Van Kampen?
Yes.
Van Zuiden?
Yes.
Mask?
Yes.
Nederhoff?
Yes.
Brondike?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Banker?
Yes.
Very good, we go on to letter G, which is to approve the impact program, one-time donation from ARCA funds to be determined by the council. Anyone can put in an amount and we can discuss.
Yeah, question, what do we have for?
It's the same amount, it's almost about four fifty, we haven't spent anything yet. Yeah, we haven't spent anything yet.
You got the second.
We designated things to, but have not spent any, put that with. Two hundred to the downtown, you have some, how much was the camera?
Two hundred thousand for the downtown.
Yeah, what was the camera?
Twelve, thirteen thousand.
Something like that.
And then the generator?
Your generator is about twelve, so that's what you have out here right now.
No motion? Are you going to give a motion? Any motion? Yeah, I need a motion to even go for it. If there's no motion, it dies on the table. It's going to die on the table. We go on to H, approve the Drives historical building donation from ARCA funds to be determined by the council.
I'll make that motion.
Yeah, put a number in it.
Yep, you have to put a number in it.
I'll make the motion to one-time donation of a hundred thousand dollars from ARCA funds to be, to the Drives Building.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, is there any discussion? There are none, can I go on to roll call, please? Alder Person Van Zuiden?
No.
Mask?
Yes.
Banker?
No.
Brondike?
Yes.
King?
No.
Nederhoff?
Yes.
Van Kampen?
No.
Okay. Now go to the committee of the whole discussion, and the first one up is discuss Alder Person appointment of the remaining two-year term of the second ward. I'm going to start by saying I already called the IML. The IML is giving me the information that it is the position of the mayor to appoint, and no consideration needs to be made for the election. The election and appointments are two different entities, so you can start with that and go on with your discussion.
But that's what the approval will become.
Yeah. It has to be, yes.
Only the mayor can put the name and nomination.
Right.
Well, until you get to the second, too, and it's a different, there's a different choice, yeah.
So it's a discussion. I talked to Brad Cole, and Dan also heard that.
Well, the official vote isn't, is not, until they need to...
A specific person. Well, you can find anybody at this point, you've got a vacancy now.
Oh, okay.
With the acceptance of the resignation.
Oh, I see, okay, so the vote has nothing to do with that.
So, but you can't vote on anything unless you have a name.
Right, yeah. Okay, and then are we okay with that, then?
Explain the second failure piece, Bill.
Well, there's a whole, I sent, sent a memorandum, there's a whole determination because there were circumstances years ago where there was never an agreement. Mayor puts somebody in nomination, council doesn't agree, so it's an impasse, it's been months and months and months. So, actually, the first appointment, if that fails, then the mayor can select a second person, if that fails, that second person serves until you reach an accord, reach an agreement. So it was a whole, whole slew of rules to prevent a vacancy forever.
As of tonight, this is just an information.
Yeah, right.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, it's not on your agenda for approval.
Oh, no, 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 no. Yeah. So just as I'll say again, Wendy, what happens then?
Then, then?
The mayor appoints.
I have, I'll bring the appointment to the council for approval, and then, just like Phil said, you, you know, you have that opportunity. And when I talked to Brad, it's really the council needs to bring up, like, if you know that there's a felony against this person, or if you know that there's something egregious that this person shouldn't serve, that's when you need to voice your opinion, and that's absolutely my instinct here, so.
Did you even, maybe the council has the, sort of qualifications?
It does.
It's from, when last one, Mike, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
We have the same thing.
And now, there's a thirty-day wait from the acceptance of the, we just...
You don't have to wait, they have thirty days once you give a name, and the council has thirty days to think.
Okay, I knew there was a thirty day on there, okay.
Or they can act immediately, or they can say, well, wait.
Okay, very good. We don't have to wait thirty days.
Don't have to.
We can pick a person, right? Okay.
Probably best data, if you just give a raw copy of the memo.
Yep.
I did.
Maybe, maybe. Yeah, maybe an email is ready. Yeah, I, I never am really good at absorbing all those details, so.
Okay.
All right, and then the second, under the committee of the whole, the discussion to creation of or amendment of an ordinance to determine what city official or officials set council agendas.
Well, didn't we also, didn't you send something on that topic too, Bill?
Yeah, I did send you a little note to Dan about, you know, what the policy is, and you don't have anything in your code about agendas, but typically it's something that the mayor and administrator do, and within, from the council, but if you want to memorialize that, you can actually pass the ordinance, totally up to the council.
Well, I think the council has it right now, or if we wanted something on the agenda, we could have it provided.
So that's not a problem.
Yeah.
So it's up to you.
Yeah. What generates with the city minister since he handles the business aspect?
It has to be with both of us, yes.
Is that the issue? I mean, is there an issue right now? Let's just put it out there, is there an issue right now with that happening?
No.
Not in that domain, yeah. All right. I agree with what you're doing, but that was...
Let's not memorialize. I'm good, Dan. Of course, I'm leaving after this meeting, so.
Okay, we go on, is there any other questions about it? Otherwise, we're going to go on to the committee reports. Finance, that was, I think that was in our packet.
You met April sixth, just want to move budgets. And we talked about the funds for downtown a little bit, allocations and stuff. Have to get up the speed and everything. I don't understand, do you have something else you want to provide? Not really, I mean, moving forward, most of the committees are saying, well, we need to sit down again and go to the finance committee so they understand, you know, whether there's money for the downtown, those types of things, so, you know, we just want to make sure that that's in place, and want to get to that point and not go pay for it, so.
And, and I can add, that ARCA money can be used for the infrastructure of the downtown.
We already, we already made two hundred.
We are, two hundred thousand, okay. Okay, we go on to personnel. Did you guys meet?
No.
Okay, economic development? That would just be out for right now, do you have anything? No?
No, it's hard to read on the cell.
Parks and Rec?
Our next meeting is going to be April eighteenth at four o'clock.
All righty, we go on to public safety. Anything? No? All right, Marina? There, no, we're done. Zoney, we had two last time, I don't think there's any issues for Zoney. And then mayor support, I'm just going to give a quick oral, that I would like to say that the Easter egg hunt that was put on by the Sparkets to the fire department was a huge success, and the Fulton Sun crew, we had a follow-up, that it was just lined up for a long time, so that was wonderful to see all the people out there, and it was a gorgeous day. I just want to remind everybody that next meeting, because after fourteen days from the election, is when we will be seating the new elected officers and swearing them in. Jackie Wilkin is a new one from fourth ward, and Terry Booster from second, and that's also, I will be making the appointments for the different entities above that we have as well at that meeting. So that's all I have. City administrator, you didn't have a report this time, correct?
No, I have one.
And chief?
Report will be in the next one, but the nineteenth, the police department, Public Works Department Township is going to partner with the schools, or the high school, and we'll be doing a community cleanup day, starting at Lock Road, working all the way back into town, all the way up on the bike path, multiple parks, a lot of different projects planned. We're going to do a lot of things in the, in four hours that day, so you see a bunch of activity, just stuff going on, so. It's been, I think, almost ten years since the school's gotten out and really, you know, put forth a big effort. The best guess they had is they knew it was low over six years ago, they couldn't put a date on it, so I'm looking forward to that. Public Works is going to be a great asset, we're going to get some stuff cleaned up and hopefully not have a bunch of trash on the bike path, so.
So are you taking, or is Kwan is helping? Because Kwan usually does that too, so.
I don't know anything about it.
Oh, okay, all right, you'll take all the help you can get, right?
I've got three hundred students and staff members, and I think that's...
Oh, there we go, perfect.
I think some of them were voluntold, but.
The other thing I would like to discuss is how is the, the situation on Fourteenth Avenue coming?
There's some citations been issued, and a new deadline's been set, so I believe the last email I got is that they would also be getting a permit for fencing and a garage, so.
Okay.
So we're moving in the right direction to get things cleaned up.
Great, that's nice to hear. Okay, Public Works?
No.
Fulton Tourism, do you have anything?
No.
Historic Society was in last.
Yep, no, I also have something, we have a program this Sunday, our April program, we're revisiting the flood of nineteen sixty-five, and I don't know, Nick, could you just put hold on, hold throughout, we actually have six different panels that we researched years ago, we met every other Saturday morning for eighteen months and gathered information and data and photos, and so that's just one of our many posters. Sue, your mom saw one of those pictures. GE provided the amphibious ducks and a bus so that people could get back to work, and so it's an interesting picture because the ladies are going to work, they've got their purses on, but also their life jackets on. But anyway, then that graphic up on the top is interesting because the little white circle in the area is Fulton Dry, the blue shows the Mississippi River and its natural bank, and then the yellow is the flooded area. And what the biggest challenge for us when we did this research is just the amount of pictures that we had to work with was phenomenal, how many people had pictures and taken, so we've got a PowerPoint presentation that we're doing Sunday. Our theme for Dutch Days this year is canals, dikes, and floods, so this is kind of a lead-in to that, Sunday at our April program. Really interesting to revisit, natural disasters are always an interesting phenomena, and when it happens in your own neighborhood, people are always interested in that. So that program is Sunday at museum, and then we're following up, that will be our theme for Dutch Days as well.
At this time, we need a motion to go into full session for litigation.
Make that motion, second.
Okay, and I need roll call, please. Alder Person Nederhoff?
Yes.
Banker?
Yes.
Mask?
Yes.
Van Kampen?